Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It is January 16th. I am going to handle our prayer and our pledge, if you will, if you'll bow with me, and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Father God, thank you for this day. Thank you for the blessings that you've given us, Lord, for the things that are happening here in this city. While we were thankful for the things that are happening in our city, Lord, we lift up all those in California that have been dealing with wildfires. I pray for those that are providing service. I pray for those family members that have lost their homes. They've lost really just their community. Lord, I pray that you give them, Lord, just give them guidance to be able to make the next steps. I pray for those people who are in leadership, that you give them guidance to deal with the next steps, and most of all, pray for their safety, pray for their safety, and just pray for the fires to subside. Lord, we thank you for all the things that you're doing in our community and how you're moving here. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Brandon.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Tonight, we're going to conclude our 2024 Stars Award recipients. I'm going to do the month of December. As you are aware, the Stars Awards were created to celebrate and to recognize those employees who go above and beyond the normal calls of duty. It recognizes individuals who consistently can perform at the highest level, demonstrating unwavering dedication and pride in their work. Tonight, we're honoring an individual who exemplifies these qualities, a person whose daily efforts and unwavering commitment ensures excellence in their role. This month's recipient is Mr. Ronnie Johnson, and his exceptional service has been noticed and appreciated not only by people in his department, but those in other areas of the city. Allow me to share a bit about Mr. Ronnie. He began his career in the early 90s, working in seasonal and part-time positions with the city. He later became working in the street department. Today, his title is the Public Works Technician 2. He's been down with the city for 22 years as a full-time employee. He began his career as a refuse customer crew supervisor, where he managed crews, including inmates, to help keep our city clean. He later transitioned to his current role. Ronnie's work ethic is remarkable. He approaches each day with the same energy and enthusiasm. He's like that energized bunny. He keeps going and going and going. Well, to highlight his impact, I reach out to his executive director, Mr. Raymond Hillis. And if you know Raymond, he's never short on words. Raymond said the following about Ronnie. He said, "Ronnie is an A1 employee who does an exceptional job. He always maintains a positive attitude and takes pride in his work. I wish I had many more employees like Ronnie." Thanks to Ronnie, the streets of Murfreesboro are always clean, leaving visitors with a great impression of our city. Ronnie was nominated for the Stars Award by Ms. Anna Browning and Ronnie Bernie. They both work in the Parks and Wrecks Department. Anna is a groundskeeper, and Ronnie is a lead groundskeeper. They said the following in the nomination form. "We always see Ronnie picking up trash along the roadside and keeping our city clean. He is an exceptional worker, and we should all strive to follow his example. He's the hardest worker in the city. But Ronnie, your dedication and positive attitude are truly inspiring." And like Raymond said, having more employees like you would be wonderful. So Ronnie, if you would, say it, stand. On behalf of the mayor, the council members in the great city of Murfreesboro, we recognize you as the December recipient of the Stars Award.
Ronnie has his wife Nancy here, so we say this all the time, that you loan your spouses to the city every single day, and then they come back. So thank you for doing that. Ronnie, thank you for your hard work. Thank you. All right. Do we have any public comment tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, let's move to our consent agenda. You have two items. Is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to old business. Ordinance 24046. This is amendment to the Ethics Code. This is second and final reading. Any questions for Adam?
If there are none, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business. We have land use matters. This is item four, rezoning property along Joby Jackson Highway. Mr. Baumley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Our sole public hearing tonight is for a rezoning of approximately four acres or so, located along the south side of Joby Jackson Parkway, just to the east of the Elam Farms Parkway intersection. It is the three parcels that are shaded in blue on the map before you. Two of those parcels are developed. The one in the middle is developed with a Shell Station, and the one on the west is developed with a Taco Bell, very recently developed, so recently that it's not showing up on this map. The vacant parcel on the very east, kind of southeast side of the development, the applicant would like to develop that with an extended stay hotel. And as a matter of fact, back in May, a sewer allocation variance was approved for that parcel to be developed with a WoodSpring Suites. The extended stay hotel use, however, is not permitted in the current HI, Heavy Industrial Zone. So the applicant has requested to rezone this parcel as well, and the owners of the two adjacent parcels have consented to the rezoning of their property as well to commercial highway. The commercial highway zone permits the extended stay hotel, which will serve the many industrial customers and employers that are located along the Joby Jackson Parkway corridor. There is commercial highway further to the west at the interchange, but to the east of Elam Farms Parkway, it's predominantly industrial zoning. Our future land use map identifies this area to be developed as industrial. However, we do have a transition policy with our future land use map that states where there are land use patterns that would indicate otherwise, that there could be, where there are land use patterns, trends that are occurring that show that the property is more suited to develop in another land use character, we can expand an adjacent land use character as a transition. And staff believes this is an appropriate expansion of the general commercial zoning and land use character located to the west, especially since the majority of the use is developing in the immediate vicinity along Joby Jackson Parkway. The side of Joby Jackson Parkway are commercial in nature. With that being said, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on December the 4th and voted at that time to recommend the approval of this rezoning request. We'll need to conduct a public hearing tonight and then vote on first reading. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Representatives of the applicant are here as well, if you have any questions for them.
Any questions? All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing for this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'd come to the podium, if you'll state your name, your address, you'll have three minutes as an individual, five minutes if you're representing a group, like a homeowners association. If you'll keep all of those comments directed to the council, we'll get those addressed at the end of the public hearing. All right, anyone wishing to speak for or against? Public hearing is now open. All right, see you now. We'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading, ordinance 24OZ45.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now move to the sewer allocation variance on Greenland Drive for a mixed use development. Mr. Barbie.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. This next item before you tonight is a sewer allocation variance request for a property located along Greenland Drive, directly across from Middle Tennessee State University. The request is submitted by Mr. Matt Taylor of SEC on behalf of his client, Mr. Rajee Shagawal. They are requesting an additional two, two additional units of sewer capacity in order to support the mixed family proposal that you see before you on your screen. Our Water Resources Department has confirmed that the additional capacity is available in that basin, and the Murfreesboro Planning Department is supportive of this application. Available if you have any questions.
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to on motion. We have item six, Rollins Brush and Limb Contract Renewal. Russell.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you. Before you, is a request to approve the renewal of a contract for Rollins, doing business as Rec Pro for Brush and Limb Collection. Renewal is required for the current Rec Pro contract to keep their services for Brush and Limb Collection. This renewal serves the city, will serve the city until January 8th, 2026. Rec Pro won the bid for services awarded in January of '23 with an annual contract total of $1.4 million. That contract allows Rec Pro to be renewed each year, not to exceed three years in total. Last year, 2024, Rec Pro served 35,000 homes with approximately 3,500 tons of yard waste monthly. This expense, which will be $727,350, is budgeted in the FY25 operation budget for solid waste, with the remaining $729,450 to be approved in FY26 operational budget. I'm available for any questions.
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Russell. All right, we'll move to item seven, the construction contract for Blackman Manson-Bertinob Intersection. Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. In April 2024, council approved the design contract for improvements at the Blackman-Bertinob-Manson Pike Intersection. The design included widening each approach to add left, right, turn lanes, as well as through lanes, along with the installation of a traffic signal. These enhancements are aimed at improving traffic flow and ensuring the safety of the area, particularly in light of the new elementary school that's currently being constructed, Baker Road and Blackman Road intersection. At 3:00 PM today, staff conducted the bid opening. You should have a copy of the results of that bid opening or a letter of recommendation from our consultant that goes over the results of the bid opening on your desk. Six bids were submitted for the project, all of which were complete and satisfactory. The prices ranged from $4.9 million to $6.7 million. The final engineer's estimate on the project was $6 million. The lowest responsive qualified bidder is Hawkins and Price with a bid of $4,865,978.05. We recommend acceptance of this bid with an additional 5% contingency. I do note also that included with that bid was CUD's water line relocation in the amount of $678,886. See to be responsible for some of that based on the part that's not depreciated already. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick comment. I think this is the second bid opening that we've had this week that has come in under what our engineers and consultants have estimated, one being Veterans Park coming in significantly under what we had anticipated. So I hope that that, from a construction standpoint, is showing that prices are going down from what we've seen the last four or five years.
If I could add to that, we were hoping for three bidders on this project and wound up with six, so that's always a good sign of what the market looks like as well.
Okay.
The contract, is it still subject to legal review? So if you vote to approve it, make the motion, the approval, subject to legal review of the contract?
Everything's always subject to legal review, Adam. That's one thing I've learned in all these years.
It's my full employment program.
Jamie, since you're a lawyer, would you like to make that motion?
I'll move for approval.
Subject to legal approval. Motion is second. Subject to legal approval. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Chris.
And for those that, we haven't made the announcement yet, but Blackman Park, Veterans Park, we had figured $23 million or $24 million, $26 million is what we had figured, and that came in around $15 million. So it was a big savings. So I think the park is going to start construction hopefully in February or March. That's what the goal. And we're going to hold you all accountable to it being open by the end of the year, so we're excited about that.
All right, no pressure.
That's right. And we had to make purchase of radio equipment for Motorola. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Steve Gerald, the deputy chief. First, we have for your consideration is the purchase of additional radio equipment from Motorola. With the addition of adding new personnel and building new police vehicles, the department is in need of purchasing additional equipment. We're asking to purchase 30 portable radios, 15 mobile radios, two base units, and the supporting equipment that they will require. The equipment is available for purchase through the current contract with Motorola, and the total amount is $396,914, which will be funded in part by the 2022 CIP bond and the department's FY25 operating budget. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I see the chief sent you to do his dirty work tonight, since you have three items on the agenda, our most expensive chief over there.
Any questions for?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to item nine, amendment number one to Central Square Solutions and Support Agreement for CAD Software.
Next, we have for consideration is the amendment one to the agreement with Central Square for support and maintenance of CAD software. Council approved a five-year agreement in January of 2024. The department has reached the maximum number of licenses that were allowable by contract, and with the anticipated growth of the department, it will be more cost-effective to go to an unlimited number of license subscription rather than individuals. The net increase for the remaining contract will be $9,207, with an annual increase of 5%, which will be paid from the department's FY25 operating budget, and future payments will be budgeted for accordingly. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 10, purchase of police vehicles from Allen J Automotive.
Last, we have is the purchase of two new unmarked police vehicles from Allen J Automotive, which are replacement vehicles and are available to be purchased through the State's General Services Central Procurement Office. The cost of the purchase is $73,880 and will be funded from the drug fund. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy chief. All right, we'll move to item 11, Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Agreement with Federal Highway Administration. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. The bipartisan infrastructure law established the SS4A program allocating $5 billion in appropriated funds over five years, starting in 2022. SS4A program provides grants to regional, local, and other communities to prevent roadway deaths and serious injuries. The program offers two types of grants, planning and demonstration grant and implementation grant. In July of 2023, the city applied for an SS4A planning and demonstration grant to develop an action plan aimed at eliminating pedestrian-involved vehicular crashes that result in injuries or fatalities. The objective of the action plan is a data-driven, comprehensive, and actionable approach to improve safety throughout the entire transportation network and ultimately achieve long-term safety goals for all transportation modes. In October 2023, the city was awarded the grant in the amount of $360,000, with the city share being $72,000 to be funded through state street aid. I'd like to recognize Lexi Stacy, who did most of the heavy lifting on this grant application. I'm invited for questions.
No questions. I move for approval. Second.
Great work, Lexi.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Jim, before you leave, try to keep everybody informed. We're going to start doing some news segments, keeping people informed on road projects that the city controls, road projects we don't have really control over. So TDOT's going to be down, third week of January, to film something for our residents to let them know. But we had a meeting on Monday with the mayor of Smyrna, the mayor of Nashville, Commissioner Ely, what's that?
The county mayor.
The county mayor, yeah. Mayor Carr was there, but then also Commissioner Ely, who's the commissioner of TDOT, and then the governor stopped in, but talking about choice lanes and what the plan is for choice lanes and how that's going to affect our community. So there's going to be a lot of information for Murfreesboro specifically. They're going to be coming out here before too long, keeping everyone updated on what's happening with those choice lanes. You may have more to add to that.
It's an interesting project. That's all I got to say.
Yeah. It's going to be interesting to see. We're what's considered phase two of the choice lane project, and it's really going to be interesting to see how that overall affects our interchanges and really what we can anticipate in the future. My comment was like, hey, we appreciate our interchanges. We're thankful for them, but most of these people in Murfreesboro care what happens once they get off the interchanges on state roads. And with that, Jim, I think you may have another breaking news that you want to maybe talk about for tomorrow?
I don't think he does, Mayor.
Come on, Jim.
Yes.
I feel skeptical, but...
It stays just in here, Jim.
I feel skeptical, but...
And the seven people watching on Facebook.
We had word from the TDOT contractor that they're looking at opening it up to a five-lane cross-section.
Opening Highway 99.
Highway 99, I'm sorry. Highway 99, five-lane cross-section by noon tomorrow. So we shall see. But there's going to be a lot of work prior to that to get it ready, because they've got to finalize their striping on the southbound approach of that roadway section.
So more like March 15th.
I didn't say what year, right?
Yeah.
But hopefully tomorrow at noon, is what we're hearing.
You said we were in the second phase. How many phases are there?
There's three. Phase three actually led the contract in October, and they will start construction on it probably in January, which is from Case and Lane to Veterans Parkway.
And Matt, and that's one of the things we thought that would be beneficial to have the TDOT. This was Jim's in City TV3 coordinating all this, but I thought it'd be beneficial. Most people think that the majority of the roads in Murfreesboro are all city roads, and most people think that Highway 99 is a city project. Jim fields a ton of calls and emails about the progress, and we're thankful to TDOT for all those projects, but those are state projects. And we thought it would be beneficial to update all of our residents on, for example, the status of Thompson Lane, that third phase of Highway 99. 96 has got some work. 231 has got some work. There's a lot of Joby Jackson interchange, 840. There's all of these interchanges and state roads that would be good just to have TDOT give us an update on. So thank you, Jim. Lots of stuff going on. All right, let's move to item 12, purchase contract with CBI for Transit Center furniture.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The Transportation Department is recommending your approval of a contract with CBI Workspace Solutions for the purchase of office furniture for the Murfreesboro Transit Center. Quotes were received from three vendors after review the Transportation Department in concurrence with purchasing selected CBI, who offered the best overall solution, both economically and in quality of furnishing options. The total purchase price is $197,284, and all furnishings are supplied through omni-cooperative contracts allowed by state law and the city purchasing code. Funding for the order will be from the 2021 CIP. So again, the Transportation Department recommends your approval of this contract, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
No questions. I move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to on motion. We have item 11, Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Agreement with Federal Highway Administration. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. The bipartisan infrastructure law established the SS4A program allocating $5 billion in appropriated funds over five years, starting in 2022. SS4A program provides grants to regional, local, and other communities to prevent roadway deaths and serious injuries. The program offers two types of grants, planning and demonstration grant and implementation grant. In July of 2023, the city applied for an SS4A planning and demonstration grant to develop an action plan aimed at eliminating pedestrian-involved vehicular crashes that result in injuries or fatalities. The objective of the action plan is a data-driven, comprehensive, and actionable approach to improve safety throughout the entire transportation network and ultimately achieve long-term safety goals for all transportation modes. In October 2023, the city was awarded the grant in the amount of $360,000, with the city share being $72,000 to be funded through state street aid. I'd like to recognize Lexi Stacy, who did most of the heavy lifting on this grant application. I'm invited for questions.
No questions. I move for approval. Second.
Great work, Lexi.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to on motion. We have item 13, Public Entity Partner Safety Grant.
Good evening again, Mayor and city council members. Staff is requesting your approval to accept a matching grant from our workers' compensation carrier, which is Public Entity Partners. The grant is about $4,000. It's going to cover safety equipment going to two departments, the fleet department and the street. The equipment we're looking at is a hand truck, some safety shoes, two drum spill containers, and some I-WI stations. The grant will reduce the expenditure of the cost from $11,000 down to about $7,400. With that said, I'm requesting your approval, your request to accept this grant.
Any questions?
I heard free money.
So moved.
Second.
He has free money.
All right, motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to on motion. We have item 13, Public Entity Partner Safety Grant.
Good evening again, Mayor and city council members. Staff is requesting your approval to accept a matching grant from our workers' compensation carrier, which is Public Entity Partners. The grant is about $4,000. It's going to cover safety equipment going to two departments, the fleet department and the street. The equipment we're looking at is a hand truck, some safety shoes, two drum spill containers, and some I-WI stations.
But, you know, back when we were trying to find a fire administration building, a Parks and Recreation Administration building, we were trying to find a water and sewer building. When I say we're trying to find, we're trying to build those. And if I remember back at the time, we were talking somewhere in the low $20 millions to build a water and sewer department. MED had brought through their building at the time, and I think that number was like $41 million to build an MED building. Then we were coupling that with trying to do fire administration and Parks and Rec. Well, you know, we have now two successful projects. The water and resources building was 26,000 square feet. I mean, if you just look at what we've been paying for office buildings, not including land, that would be somewhere close to $20 million, and I think we're going to end up roughly half of that by taking a repurposed building in something that was vacant and then making that into a new department. So, I think it's 316 Robert Rose, it's on the corner of Robert Rose, and then also the new Gateway Boulevard Road that was built and extended. That's our new Water Resources Department building. So, kudos to all of you guys who've worked on that, but also I think it's also kudos to the council members that, you know, you're realistically looking at a $10 or $12 million savings to the taxpayer, which has allowed us to do other things, and at the same time, repurpose a building that was not being used that now our customers can use and give us room to grow in that department. So, City TV3 did a grand opening with Valerie Smith today. It's on all of our social media accounts that you can check and get an up-close sort of tour of the building. So, great job to our team on doing that. The council, we need to have an executive session on pending litigation, so we will have that in the administrative conference room as soon as we gavel. And Austin, I think you do have an announcement as well.
Yeah, it's tough to do this, but I lost a bet to Adam Tucker, and so, you know, it was the Tennessee-Ohio State game back in December, but I've lined this Ohio State hat with a safety net. It's got a Tennessee hat underneath it, so, you know, it's not officially on my head, Adam, you know?[1557.66]